So, good morning. But um, so welcome to the virtual work session for the city of Mount Rainier today, April sixteenth at seven P M. I'd like to call the order, you see my council is here. All right, Luke Cheswick?
Here.
Jerry Soffis?
I'm here.
Um Valerie Sessio's gonna be running a little bit behind, but she'll be here and then I have Danielle Carr. All right, so moving on to the next one, uh review of the agenda. Vice Mayor, can you go ahead and review the agenda, please, and I'll be adding uh one item?
Sure, um this is the agenda, the work session of Mayor and Council for Mount Rainier. It's a virtual work session for Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four at seven o'clock P M. Items for discussion are one, call to order, two, review of the agenda, three, presentation and discussion on Blitz Project. The Mayor and Council will receive a presentation from Ms. Blair Danes from the Low Impact Development Center on the Blitz Project. Four, presentation and discussion on Gateway CDC report. We'll receive a report from the Gateway CDC interim executive director, Michelle Lee. Five, presentation and discussion on Greenworks. Joe's Movement Emporium will present their free tree planting program and identify ways that the tree program can supplement the ongoing reforestation efforts of the city and the Mount Rainier Tree Commission. Six, presentation and discussion on the Police Review and Advisory Board report. The Police Review and Advisory Board will make a presentation to the Mayor and Council. Seven, presentation and discussion on funding for the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. Councilmember Daniel Carter will make a presentation and have a discussion with the Mayor and Council on funding the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Fire Department. Eight, presentation of minutes. The clerk will present the following minutes to the Mayor and Council for the March nineteenth, twenty twenty four work session, March twenty third, twenty twenty four budget public hearing and budget work session, April second, twenty twenty four legislative meeting and bu- budget legislative meeting, and the April ninth, twenty twenty four public budget public hearing and budget work session, and nine is adjournment.
That was a bit of like tongue twister, right, Luke?
Yes.
Can I have the additional item being the new number six, please? And it's gonna be informational. I started on the budget, we have pre-approved five hundred dollars for Thomas Stone and five hundred dollars for Mount Rainier Elementary for Teacher Appreciation Week. So we usually um let the community know that we're doing this and um we present a check to each of the schools and they utilize those funds to um celebrate the teachers. In unison with um the P T O and parents, so we all kind of put our of our resources together to um to do something cool for the teachers who we love and appreciate in our city. Okay? Thank you, Melly. In the meantime, just a reminder that we're four weeks away from Mount Rainier Day. Um, we look forward to seeing you there, it's our hundred and fourteenth birthday. So it should be um fun and exciting. For Melly, sorry, Melly. Uh the only thing Melly put in five hundred for Thomas Stone, okay? So that way they know it's not five hundred for both, but five hundred for each. For Mount Rainier Elementary and five hundred dollars for Thomas Stone Elementary. After the end, if you could put five hundred dollars. So put total a thousand dollars, because I don't, I wanna make sure you put those five hundred for each, okay? If you go out, that'll be fine. And the only thing I'm gonna ask when you do the notes, if you could add the budget line items. I'm not gonna ask you to get it right now, but we all know it's there, it's been there for the last few years. We've been doing this for years. I think maybe at least we could vouch for at least the last seven years. It's always, you know, it used to be like we used to approve it and then as of like um three years, we just decided to add it in the budget and just like announce it to the community, we're doing that. So that way it would be like a budget line item for the teachers. Okay, thank you, Melly. All right, anything you guys need to delete out of this list? And that could be five minutes, uh Melly, it doesn't have to be much, and you could leave it like that, it's fine. All right, um, can you move it to the top of the agenda? So you heard the agenda, thank you Luke for reading through it, um. And we have quite a few presentations, thank you to all our presenters. I know it says like fifteen min- fifteen or twenty minutes. Please make sure you cut that in half so that we have room for questions, because I know we all love to go home today. I'll I'll go back from our computer store home, right? So the first presentation would be presentation discussion on the Blitz Project. The Mayor Council received a presentation from Ms. Blair Daniels from L I D C um on the Blitz Project. So uh Ms. Blair, are you with us and do you need a sharing capability for the screen?
Uh yes, actually, I am presenting on behalf of Blair. I'm Emily with the Low Impact Development Center. Um and yes, if I can share a screen, I'll um pop up our presentation.
Okay. Apologies, Melissa, City Clerk. No, no, you're fine, we appreciate you guys being here. You guys could help counsel this, but we appreciate you better being here, okay?
Yes, uh we we have com- conflicting um meetings tonight, so she's she's participating in another one. Um.
Thank you.
Okay, uh and you can see my screen now?
If you can make it into a full screen, yes, we could see the screen in the side screens, there you go. Perfect, thank you.
Um yes, so I'm Emily Clifton with the Low Impact Development Center, um Associate Executive Director there. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. Um and I appreciate you all reaching out to Blair um to get us on your agenda. So I will be quick, uh because I know you are have, that was a long agenda. Um but wanted to introduce the project. Uh we received grant funding from the Chesapeake Bay Trust. It's the Prince George's County Stewardship Grant Program, so this is money from Prince George's County. Um and the objective was to um implement what they're calling a nuisance flood blitz in um the areas of Brentwood North Brentwood and primarily, but also including areas that drain to it. Um so just a a quick overview. Um the idea here really is taking elements of the existing rain check rebate program that the county already has. And I'm, if you're not familiar with it, please let me know, because we would like to make sure you have information on that. Uh but it's utilizing practices from that and targeting those into areas um where some localized flooding has been a problem. Um and this is a pilot project through the county. I, the intention is to learn from this and and replicate over time. Um but uh again, it's focused in in this area. But as you can see from this map, there are areas of um Mount Rainier um that drain to it. Um so uh why is this important? The so of course, the rain check rebate program, um the the goal there is to uh it's focused on storm water management, water quality improvements. But a lot of our urban areas are experiencing um flooding issues as well. Um so the idea was how can we utilize this type of program to kind of tweak it and and um focus on those urban areas and getting these types of practices onto properties. Um one, you know, uh to help out homeowners, property owners, but also collectively, the idea is the more of these um B M Ps you install, the the greater benefit you're gonna have as a whole. Um so eligible practices, all the ones here, except for conservation landscaping, are already part of the rain check rebate program. Conservation landscaping is going to be added um to the rain check rebate program, is not quite there yet. They're still working out some kinks. However, um we we are allowed to utilize conservation landscaping here. Um so rain gardens, pavement removal, tree plantings, cisterns, discon- disconnections and conservation. Landscaping are the types of practices we're looking at installing. Um so for this project, uh there will not be a cost to homeowners that per- or property owners that participate. Um and and that is important to note. I also want to point out, uh the rain check rebate program itself, there's a a cap that how much can be utilized on any one program. If someone participates in this pilot program, it will not count against them if they decide to go through the rain check rebate program um at a at a later date. Um so again, I kind of went over who is eligible, but feel free to ask questions a- about that. Um again, our target area is Brentwood North Brentwood, but I appreciate you all bringing us in on this conversation, because you you see from the map, um the Mount Rainier's in there as well. Um but uh so it is first come, first served. Um uh that being said, uh you know, we've already been targeting Brentwood North Brentwood Brentwood area. Um we're approximating, we have about enough funding to cover uh fifty or so um properties uh with the with the pilot. You've already received more than that um in applications so far, but I do wanna give you the information for how it works. Um the property owner fills out an interest form, um and I'll provide the link um in a the the next slide. Um the form is evaluated for eligibility. We're working with our partners Rain Plan on this process um and have it set up through them. Um and then if the uh property is eligible, uh that means uh you know, the it's the property owner that submitted, it looks like it's a good fit. The what they're wanting to do is in line with the practices that can be installed. Um then uh it would be selected to to receive a project. Um so in the Rain Plan platform, and we wanted to put this in here real quick, because Rain Plan is different. At Low Impact Development Center, most of you have heard from about us, Anticoasture Watershed Society also partner on this. But Rain Plan is is new to everyone, so we don't want anybody to be concerned if they see this pop up. Yes, it's part of the pro- program. Um uh basically, we uh worked with them, they've designed an an app or not, sorry, an app, a webpage that fits well on a phone um where you can go enter information into um a simple form about your property. Um give information on how you want to be contacted. Um and then you can sign up from there using iCalendar for um a a virtual site visit, because that's the first step. Um so uh you schedule that virtual site visit, uh and then uh you'll have that one-on-one interaction where you'll be asked more questions about the property um and provide information, that just helps. All that information comes to us and then we're able to um better understand, you know, uh what it is that a property owner is wanting um and how we can help. So who's overseeing the nuisance flooding blitz? Uh that's us, the Low Impact Development Center. It's really actually my colleague, Blair Dannies, who's not here tonight, but uh uh that's if you just put her face on mine. Um but again, it is a partnership. Uh this is Prince George's County uh funding, um so we are working closely with the Department of Environment on this. Um and our partners for the actual implementation are Rain Plan and Anticoasture Watershed Society. Um if you have questions, though, uh a couple of things, is Brentwoodblitz@lidocenter.org. Um email we've set up um so that anybody on the project team um can uh get the email and be aware of the questions. Um the app itself or the this little Q R code, um myrainplan.com, Brentwood Blitz. Um or if you were to go onto their site and type in your address and it's in the the project area, this information will pop up too. Uh and hopefully that was fast enough, so you all have some time to ask some questions.
Thank you so much for that for that concise and important guided information. Um Jared, I'm gonna sit the floor to you first, go ahead.
No, just wanted to thank you for coming in tonight and highlighting information about the program, uh which I think's gonna be a, you know, a great asset and opportunity. Um I think uh, you know, I think the only ask I would have is if you could link up with our staff, uh so they can uh whatever information you put together, they can kind of blast it out through official city communication and we can get it out to folks. So um any properties that folks are interested in potentially submitting for, they can kind of get in your um queue for consideration. I know there's a, it's a Brentwood and North Brentwood project, and I know it's focused on there. We, a lot of our city, as you know, drains. Basically drains downhill and, you know, whatever we can do, steps we can take. Um I and I just also wanted to say, like, the program design of this is helpful. I think the rain check program's been a great asset for a lot of households in our city uh for low and moderate income households, because it's reimbursable, it's more challenging. The way you've set this up, I think it's gonna be really helpful at helping uh advance some stormwater practices at um uh households that otherwise might have challenges. So thank you again for taking the time and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um all right, Luke?
Luke Cheswick?
I'm here, sorry, just making sure I was off mute. Um I really appreciate this presentation, um great information, great program. Um as you were talking, I I went in, because I had actually, when I found out about it, I signed up, but I didn't realize that you could actually schedule something, so I'm sort of waiting to hear back from somebody. Um and as you talked, I went into my email and said, oh, I can sign up for something. So that was a little um uh yeah, hard for me to see when I first signed up for it. Um so so I'll share that with others as well, that information. Um but as Jared said, to get some information to our staff and that might be a useful tidbit for for our staff to include in the communication, to make sure they do that kind of one-two dance. Um sign up and then make sure they schedule as well.
Yeah, and and in those regards, if you see something that isn't quite right, like hard to see the calendar, you know, sign up, let us know, because we are working with Rain Plan, uh they've already made one adjustment for us. Um they're they're really responsive and I appreciate their technological abilities.
Yeah, so on the on the screen, when you click to sign up, it says that somebody will be in contact with you and you have to scroll down the screen to see while you wait, and so you don't see that at first, so.
Okay.
Um so very helpful. Um I would say that the city, um uh Mount Rainier has something that we call a native plant network um where we we educate and incentivize residents to plant native on their property. And if they hit twenty-five native plants on their property, we do a certification through our Green Team Pro- Program. Um and then they get a sign designed by a local artist on their yard. And then we 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 put those houses on a Google map, so we can see who has native ecosystems in our town. So we can focus future educational efforts on areas that do not have that native planting. So uh you may wanna, I'm trying to think about how best to do this. But after you um, you know, do landscaping on properties, most likely, I think they would probably meet our qualifications. So maybe we could partner in a way to like get them certified and get them assigned after you're kind of done with them.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. And so you can communicate with staff, staff can get you in touch with me and the Green Team.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, Luke, remember, we cannot make a conversation, all right? Thank you for that. All right, um moving on, so please take note that Valerie is here, I saw her coming a little bit earlier. I just wanna make sure, um you know, that we have a full team, on Danielle and then Valerie.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Um thank you so much for coming and uh doing this presentation. Um I'm still learning a lot about the uh the the rain management and the L I D. I I haven't been on council for quite a year yet. So um I found your, oh, she already left, she left. Is Emily still here? Selena, you're muted.
Um I think I thought what I dropped, so.
Yeah.
We'll we'll let it be and I'll follow up with her, okay?
That's fine, um anyway, I do appreciate the uh the uh presentation, because it gave me something more to to learn about, so I appreciate that.
Okay, so Melissa, can we move to our next item? Thank you, Melly. All right, so we're gonna move on to the next item, this is presentation discussion on Gateway C C report. The Mayor Council received a report from Gateway C C interim executive director and our wonderful Mount Rainier resident, Michelle Lee. Hi, Michelle, how are you? So it's a pleasure to see you. And you're muted, you're just you're just as bad as I am.
Okay, there we go. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I didn't see that one, okay? Um uh so I I am Michelle Dawn Lee, I'm the interim executive director of Gateway CDC and I want to say thank you all for having me here today. Um and we have some of our board members online as well, uh so uh appreciate them coming out. Um last year, uh the city of Mount Rainier, along with the towns of Brentwood and North Brentwood, allocated funding to help bolster Gateway CDC's operations and programming. And so tonight, we wanted to come and report back and share with you how your investment in Gateway has made a huge impact on the organization and as a result, on the, an impact on the community that we both serve. So on behalf of uh Gateway CDC and the board, I wanna say thank you. Um we presented to the town of North Brentwood last night and I shared with them that um without healthy relationships with the towns and healthy partnerships, it would be difficult at best for us to fulfill our mission. I have a presentation that I wanna share, so if you could permit me to share the screen?
Yeah, Melly will give you um access. And what we do as a point of preference, uh Constance Woodall is our link to the Gateway CDC representing the city of Mount Rainier, so that what Harold was assigned um over a year ago now. So go ahead, Michelle.
Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, hold on, let me, I'm having some tech issues with the view. There we go. So Gateway CDC um is a five oh one C three organization that for over twenty years has been at the forefront of um driving economic and community development along the Route One Quarter. And so despite the numerous changes and challenges that our communities had, particularly in recent years, Gateway CDC is still holding true to its mission, which is economic revitalization of the Prince George's County Gateway Arts District. And so in recent months, we've gone through our own transformation. Um we have new board leadership, we have new team members in place, and we believe that um because of your investment and the investment of the other towns, we are now in a better position to navigate not only the organization's transitions, but um the arts district's next phase of growth. So one of the things that we're doing, um the Board of Directors is uh reactivating Gateway CDC's committee structure. Um we do have a few of our board members online. Um I just wanna say thank you, I was gonna take time to introduce, but I don't think we're gonna have time for the presentation. So um I think I see Robert Clark online, Anthony Lee is online. Uh he's our president emeritus, Robert is our vice president. Evan Dom is the representative from North Brentwood. Uh I don't think Tanya was able to make it, and of course, we have Valerie, who's the representative um from the city of Mount Rainier. So the first thing we did um uh in November was we hired two part-time team members um to expand our operation uh operational capabilities. Desiree McCraw is our new community manager, and she's been instrumental in allowing us to increase the activation of our spaces um and also to serve the needs of the artists and our tenants and our customers. Jada Davis is our marketing coordinator, she has uh greatly increased our visibility on social media. Um and Ally O'Neil, who some of you may know, who was with Neighborhood Design Center, she is now a consultant. And we're working with Ally and the Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council on improving the operations um of the overall. on improving the operations um of the overall Gateway Arts District and the Arts District Management Team. So one of the things we knew we needed to focus on, um, we need to better position Gateway CDC financially. Um, so we have stepped up our effort at going after other funding sources um to support our operations and programs. And so we have a few um of the grants listed here that we're pursuing. Um, so for quite some time now, Gateway's annual budget has hovered at or around a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we are looking to significantly increase that number so that we can handle the expected growth. So here we, um, on the next two slides, actually, we have highlighted some of the programs, workshops and events that have taken place since the end of last year. Um, most notably for Mount Rainier. We have worked with a company called Dem Gibson's Films, which is a production company that has several projects um slated to stream on the All Black Network. They shot their most recent project here in the Arts District. Um, and we're based in the lab. And they use several Mount Rainier, Mount Rainier businesses um as a part of their production process. So we believe that it was a great shot in the arm for our local economy. We collaborated with Ron Hopkins on the project as well as the Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council. So I think I saw Ron online. I wanted to publicly thank them both for all of their hard work and supporting that project as well. So looking ahead, um, Gateway CDC plans to increase its collaborative marketing and branding efforts. We want to bring more awareness of the Gateway Arts District to the greater region. Um, we want to reach a wider audience and we want to ultimately drive traffic and sales to our local businesses. So we're gonna continue to publish the lab magazine and we want to work with each of the towns on marketing across promotions as well. So Gateway, um, we are also actively engaged in um working on additional projects and partnerships. Um, the Dem Gibson's Film, um, the, the company that I spoke about earlier, several members of their team um live in Prince George's County. And they see the Arts District as an ideal home and base of operations for them. So we're currently working on an MOU. Um, and we believe that this will be a, a great opportunity to infuse dollars into our local economy um to, on a continuing basis, actually. We also received a three hundred thousand dollar bond bill from the state of Maryland last year. And uh part of those funds are slated to make improvements to the Gateway Media Arts Lab. Um, we are also working with the Prince George's African American Museum to help them get reopened. Uh, as well as Sis's Tavern, who has already opened. Um, but uh we're looking to support them in activating their space. And so finally, um, we're working to improve our internal operations so that we can get to continue to increase our effectiveness. Um, we promised you last year that we would start uh with an annual financial review and I'm happy to say that that is complete. Um, and I did email that earlier, so hopefully you got it. Um, we're gonna continue to provide data and analysis that will allow you and the broader community the, to measure the success of our programs. So, you know, as a last note, I just want to share with you that we are having a community cleanup this Saturday at ten AM, starting at Gateway CDC, and we're gonna head over to the museum afterwards. Um, but overall, I just want to thank you for your time. I hope that we can continue to collaborate with the town. Um, and we can count on your continued support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Also to point out that uh Constance and Marcus, um, Monroe, they have actually a meeting in Bramwood, so that's the reason why he, I think he was here for about a second. He had to jump back. But um, they, they're, they had double meeting today. Alright, if you could, um, so I'm gonna have Valerie uh be our first speaker because she's um our appointed um board member and liaison for Gateway CDC. Go first. Go ahead, Valerie.
Yeah, um, thank you and thank you, Michelle, for that presentation. I think um it speaks volumes to what you've been doing um as you know, the interim executive director for the Gateway CDC. And and I think it's really important for community members to know that, you know, the city of Mount Rainier, together with Brentwood, North Brentwood, coming together and, and really um spearheading funding for the operational support for Gateway CDC is really important so that they can continue to leverage our tax dollars. They can go after grants that we might not be able to go after. They can do events that we might not be able to do as a city by ourselves. Um, and it really, it strengthens, strengthens the Route One community. So I, I really appreciate what you've been doing. Um, and I say keep up the good work. So thank you.
Perfect. Luke, I'm gonna go next to you. I think, I think quite a few of us, quite a few of us, and I mean, have been a board member to Gateway. So I know Luke, you were right before it as well. So go ahead. I'm gonna see you the floor, then Jared.
No, this board and this CD is doing much better than anything I ever did when I was there. So, Michelle's laughing because she knows it's true. Um, uh, she, don't you lie. Don't lie on screen there. Um, which gives Valerie credit, um, and everyone else. Um, no, Gateway CDC is a great organization. Um, it, it, yeah, it's just, it, it does so much and a lot of residents aren't kind of aware of that. So, you know, one of the things I really hope that comes with this sort of renewal is that more residents see what an asset Gateway CDC is to the community. Um, and because it really is. And I'm just so excited for the future for you all. Um, for how engaged you are, uh, Michelle, for you being in this role. I don't know how much, how long you want to be in there, in the role for. I don't know if you want to, if you want to move to the, uh, you know, ED, or if you're like, get me out of this interim role as soon as possible. I don't know, but I think you're gonna be great. So, um, you know, do what you gotta do. Um, and I just appreciate you stepping up into that role, um, because it's not an easy role. Um, you know, there's a lot of programming that the Gateway CDC produces with very little staff. Um, and so it's very impressive. Um, they can keep the ship, keep, keep the ship moving. So just thank you for everything and I'm just looking forward to all the new stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke.
Perfect. Ja- Jared, have you also been a board member at this point? I'm not sure who else has been a board member. I know, I know, Mary Miles was a board member for many years before us too. I guess she was one of the founding people as well, but go ahead.
Yeah, twenty twelve through twenty fourteen. And uh, I just, I just want to thank, um, you know, Gateway's done great work. It's been a critical, uh, you know, a critical stakeholder in our community, bringing our three towns together, uh, you know, serving the broad, uh, just broad populations across all of our, um, all of our towns. So I just want to really thank you, um, Michelle, for, I know you've put an incredible amount of, you know, work and uh, you know, sweat equity and you know, I know you care a ton about this community, this whole corridor and everyone that's in it. So I just really appreciate the passion and the drive and the work you've done. Um, to get Gateway on good footing and to the board of board members that showed up, thank you for your, your leadership and your volunteer time and uh helping get, get things back together. And I'm really, really excited to see the, you know, obviously the resources that the organizations be able to bring in, the organization, the resources that are on the way and the plans, plans ahead. So just, you know, know, I'm certainly very grateful. I know our rest of council is too, and um, you know, our community for all the work that you're doing um to improve and reach out. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. Danielle?
Um, yes, hi, Michelle. Um, again, you know, I haven't been here a year, but the uh things that I've been learning over this last year about the Gateway CDC far exceed what I originally thought as just a regular, you know, citizen. So I can attest to, you know, so much that you guys do that there is so much to learn and um share with the rest of the community. Um, I, the, watching the movie, being filmed and everything was really exciting. My partner, you know, actually studied stage and theater and is a lighting designer. He was just so like, they do that? They, they're actually, you know, it's like, yeah. And he's like, we gotta know more about this. So, um, it's really ignited a lot of interest in the residents who do not know what the Gateway CDC is. So, um, that goes to attest to, you know, um, your, your, um, the more visibility. Um, and with the movie, that definitely did that. So I've enjoyed learning and I'm enjoying learning more about, um, what all you do. I have not been a board member because like I said, I haven't been on here long enough. But, um, I'm definitely a supporter of everything you're doing. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
So I will say the final words for the night. Because then you guys are busy. You guys have been doing a lot of reporting. You guys have to get back to work. Um, definitely. Thank you. I know when we originally had this conversation, we had ambition, you know, not just working in different islands, but working in United. We have so much, you know, assets between the three cities and so much talent. It's unbelievable. I think the other part that people don't realize when we talk about economic development is the fact that these businesses, most of businesses here in Mount Rainier, especially around Route One, there are people that live in the city of Mount Rainier as well. So it's also a way for our residents to engage in economic development, but also hire people locally and be able to continue to grow and expand, right? So what is it that every city wants? It's like food traffic to be able to continue carrying business and part of the filming part, it wasn't, you know, just the great locations that they have, wonderful locations in the city of Mount Rainier, please come over, right? But also it's the fact that the catering, the different things that they needed were purchased here locally as well, infusing economic dollars into Mount Rainier. As you guys all know, we don't have a big business like base to upset our taxes, but if our businesses are doing good and they're all feel, right? It allows for us to have, um, even more growth. And I think that we had done a beautiful work. Mr. Hopkins, thank you for that as well. When it comes to the facade improvements and they're paying off because people want to come over and film in places that are diverse, but also have a little bit of edge that they feel modern, but at the same time, they become historical because they could have several towns and several locations in one. So I have seen the growth. Thank you for the event, all the events that you guys put together because you guys definitely touched the various subjects and you guys, um, are very open to touch them in a, in a way that allows people to ask questions, feel comfortable to ask questions and spreads the beauty of like what our culture does, that, you know, is a way to connect with people and have those tough situations and tough conversations. So we're very thankful for everything you guys are doing and at the same time, um, we look forward to continue working and collaborating and um continue rising and I was, beautiful job and thank you to all the board members for being here, you know, and Michelle, you're doing outstanding and we love to continue collaborating with you guys and finding what other outlets and I'm so happy you guys are also working for the African American Museum as part of like also North Brentwood. Sis's Tavern also has a big historical significance, not just for North Brentwood, but also for the whole entire area. So often said that a lot of times we go to DC and other places to look at, you know, black history and US history when it comes to it, right? But we have so much history that's here and Brentwood or Brentwood and Mount Rainier that, um, we need to highlight. I think they guys are doing a beautiful job at like pushing and working to make sure those stories are also, um, that are also heard in those historical places are also open to, for us to, um, add those discussions and, and be able to utilize them. So I will say thank you. You guys don't have to stay here. You're more than welcome, but if not, good night and, um, thank you for everything you guys are doing, okay?
Thank you so much. We're about to head over to Brentwood now, so.
Send my love and regards to Brentwood. Thank you guys so much. Okay, bye. And except for Valerie, Valerie stayed. I'm like, you switched places, like Marcus will go over. Alright, perfect. Moving on to the next, um, the next presentation. Um, if we're getting with CDC, Mount Rainier was one of the founding cities, so just FYI on that, right? Um, so we always had a presentation. Alright, so Presentation Discussion on Green Works, twenty minutes. Joe's Movement Emporium will present their free tree planting program, identify ways that the program can supplement the ongoing reforestation efforts of the city of Mount Rainier and the City of Mount Rainier Tree Commission.
Hello.
Hi, Will. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing fine. Looking forward to the presentation.
Absolutely.
Do you need sharing capability?
Uh, let me see. We are good.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, alright, so I'm gonna just kind of start off and give an overview of our program. And then just, um, what we've kind of discussed with the Mount Rainier Tree Commission and what that partnership, um, um, is potentially going to look like and what kind of commitments we could make um to the city. So, uh, my name is Will Sanders. I'm the program coordinator for, uh, Green Works at Joe's Movement Emporium. We are, our program is, um, five years old. We started out um with our strength team program and now have moved into kind of tree planting and um community awareness on uh different urban tree canopy issues. So we, our goals are to protect the urban tree canopy of Prince George's County. We do that through tree planting and invasive plant removal, um, preventing litter from entering the Anacostia River watershed. And we do that from our trash traps that we have with our partnership with Anacostia River Keeper, uh, creating entry level jobs for young adults. Um, and then also promoting general environmentalism in the community. Uh, an example of a tree planting program I thought you all might be interested in is our work with the town of Bladensburg. So last fall, working with the town administrator in the Department Director of Public Works, we planted fifty-seven trees across the town. Uh, predominantly street trees, but we also had a, they connected us with the church. Um, we planted an additional twenty trees. And we're actually working now with them with uh local businesses to hopefully plant some more in the coming fall. Uh, and then, uh, this is another project that we did, um, in Chevrolet, Maryland, also ongoing at a location called Red Maple Run. Um, a community partner, uh, reached out to us and we removed invasive plants from this hillside along a river and then planted, uh, forty additional trees at that site. Um, and we're still ongoingly kind of removing plants and planting new trees. Uh, this is our strength team programs. We actually have a trash trap in Mount Rainier, uh, right by the nature center. If you haven't seen it, you should come by. Uh, we actually just did um, in a trash trap, a public trash trap cleanup, um, at the Mount Rainier Garden crawl, which we organized, uh, with the Mount Rainier Nature Center. So that was super fun. Uh, I hope you all got to come. Hopefully it might be an annual thing. So if you didn't get to go this year, uh, maybe you get to go next year. But we, uh, try to do all sorts of different community events, uh, whether that be invasive plant removal demonstrations, uh, we did an event at the nature center called one-three, one-two-three salsa, where we learned how to grow salsa, make salsa, and then also, um, we danced some salsa as well. Uh, so, um, we're always, um, excited to do partnerships with towns or other local community organizations to just want to spread awareness. And so the outline for our partnership, so we are funded by the Chesapeake Bay Trust. Uh, next year, we are going to be up for funding for five hundred trees in communities in Prince George's County. Now, we have, um, various like guidelines that they have for us for where we can and can plant. Um, pretty much the entire city of Mount Rainier is open to us to be able to plant, which is great. Uh, for our grant, um, with that, the tree planting includes, um, purchasing the trees, installing the trees, um, working with homeowners, um, to get them in the ground. Uh, and then if the trees are accessible to us, either planted along a tree strip, along the street or in the front yard, um, we are also obligated to water them for two years and do general maintenance. So that might be mulching, um, with their vines growing up in the tree, some very basic pruning. Uh, and then once those two years are up, um, the responsibility of maintaining that tree would either transfer it to the town or would transfer to the, the property homeowner. Um, and then when we plant, we'll also provide, um, some basic care information as part of a packet that we'll have. Uh, and kind of the steps that we've taken with other towns and what we've kind of discussed with the Mount Rainier, um, tree commission is, um, one, putting out just a general request form. Uh, and I think we've, we've got a bit of a comms plan that we're putting together, which I think we're hoping to launch for Arbor Day this year. Uh, but this is just basic contact information, um, addresses of people because we want to be able to reach out to them at a later point where we can give them, um, just an, an information packet of the tree species that we have available. Uh, the tree commission, I think, has specific species that they would like. And so that would be a constraint. And then also what the availability is at nurseries because there's so much money right now, uh, going to urban tree planting that there's actually a really big demand, um, uh, the different species that we're gonna be able to have available. So, um, once we figure out what that list will be, we'll distribute that out to, um, potential homeowners, uh, and then also a liability waiver. So we have permission to plant on their property, um, do regular maintenance. And then also to call, uh, Miss Utility, which is the, uh, utility conglomerate, so that, yeah, you all know. Uh, just so that we don't run into any issues, um, when we go to plant. Uh, and then, uh, the last step is, uh, we'll be ready to plant. So with the packet, I'm also gonna distribute out markers so people will mark out the spots so Miss Utility knows where to check. Uh, and then, uh, that'll be one to two weeks. And then at the day of planting, we will come out and do the planting. And that is all I have.
Alright, perfect. Thank you so much. So I'm gonna start with, um, tree commission, uh, liaison. And who's that? You're awfully quiet. They're jumping like, I thought Luke was gonna be me. Go ahead, Luke. Go ahead, Luke.
No, I really appreciate the presentation um and working with the tree commission here. And I really defer to anything that Mary Lee has to say on this subject. Um, but I'll, I'll let you kinda go around this, the council first, Selena, if anyone has any questions.
Perfect. I usually try to go to the uh liaison first on the way around, so that way um you get a chance to say whatever you need to say and then come around, okay? Perfect. Thank you, Luke. Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think it's pretty cool what you guys are doing. Um, and I know that you'll have a lot of success, so thank you.
Perfect. Danielle Jarrett?
Um, yes, actually, Will, thank you so much for doing this. I um was just reaching out to our city manager last week. Um, we've had people, myself included, that have lost trees to weather disease. Um, uh, over the last couple of years and after spending, you know, a few thousand dollars to have the dead or diseased trees removed. It's not, you know, financially feasible sometimes to just run out and replace the trees. So I know that there are some um I'm not tree orphan wouldn't be the right way, but people who are missing trees that would love to hear about this. So I'm very excited about this and uh and learning more and maybe even participating myself. So thank you so much for coming.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Jared, and I'm gonna go to Mary Lee. Okay, go ahead.
I just echo everyone else's thoughts. Uh, thanks for the great work you're doing uh in our community. Appreciate it.
Perfect. Mary Lee, you have the floor.
Yeah, hi, everybody. And just a big thanks to Will for, for presenting. And as he mentioned, he came to the, the last tree commission meeting we had and talked about this and I just wanna highlight one thing he mentioned, which is really unique about this particular program is the maintenance piece. So he went through it pretty quickly, but the watering. So as I think many on this call know, the watering of street trees. Um, we try to get residents to, to help with that if they adopt the tree and then sometimes it falls to the city staff to help through public works and it's just always, it's just hard, right, to get the water trucks going and all that. So I think this is a really great opportunity for the city because of that built-in two-year maintenance of the watering of the public street trees. So I'm really, really excited about that. And then as Will mentioned, um, we're working on a communis- communications plan and trying to get that together. Um, so we'll be communicating with, with Pink and other staff, um hopefully in the next day or so, because we would like to get the word out on Arbor Day, which is next, next week, so the twenty-sixth. Um, and then la- the last thing I'll just mention is that um we had a great partnership with Casey Trees as well. And they're completing the planting of sixty trees, so that was a great opportunity for residents. And what we've learned, which isn't a surprise, is that there's a lot of folks that aren't getting the electronic messages about these opportunities. So trying to figure out a way to kind of get more of that kind of social networking with neighbors about this opportunity. Trying to get some boots on the ground to, to actually knock on doors, because what we've learned is that a lot of people are really excited about the opportunity to get a free tree and take care of it, but they don't always know about it. So just trying to always crack that nut of figuring out how to get the word out to folks who aren't subscribed to various digital platforms. So in there, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I think that one recommendation before the tree commission, this is like a program that opens in next amount of month. Maybe like start working on um submitting information early enough, so that we were able to do it with more than one week notice. So that way um we're able to update it, put in the messenger and see if we could put some stuff out. Um, but I think that if you guys have fifty trees as an example, right? Create a waiting list and that way um if more trees are available, right, um you guys, those are the, you know, send them out, be like, I know you were interested on it. Here's like you're in the waiting list, here it is. But I'll say let's make sure that we run the signup list uh through the city uh site, so that was housed there. And make sure you guys also copy not just Pink, but our clerk and um the city manager, so that was there in the loop. So that we like the information also moves a little bit faster and um definitely the city is always happy to partner up with like our committees and with Joe's and and we've been doing trees for a while. Our um wonderful also tree expert um council member, former mayor as well, Brian Neller, share um a link with us that shows that Mount Rainier green canopy is continuing to increase and improve. And we wanna get it to as green as we possibly can and as a point of information, right, uh we are Tree City USA. Thank you, Tree Team, you know, Tree Team for making sure and the whole entire public works team for making sure that continues to happen. And also we're up for sustainable Maryland recertification. That's something that we get resuscitated every two years or so. So all those extra trees, collaboration, stuff like that help our application become stronger. I know the Green Team takes a big um push on that um on those effort as well. So anything green that we do around town, we put it in the application, it gets evaluated and um and we get in, in a war, you know, making sure that um our first arm. You know, our collective efforts between cities, committees, volunteers, residents and everybody is through it. But I will say create a waiting list after the fifty, create the waiting list, so that way we are aware. The other thing to point out is like they have created usually a list of very specific, I believe, native trees, so trees that will not grow after a certain height. That has helped because in the past they will have like gigantic trees and they'll prune them and they continue doing this and after a certain point, they crack. So in the, in the last few years, I know uh they've been very instrumental putting a list together of trees that do not grow too high. So that way to take into account also the power lines and also how far, uh how far the roots extend and continue to work with like uh trying to get as many native trees that are like um that are easier to take care of, but lasts a lot longer in a native uh terrain to make sure we also answer to our um native planning um goals. All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. And uh as soon as you guys send it out, we'll send it out, council members. Put it out in your outlets as well to help um outreach um in communication, okay? Thank you guys so much. And we'll have a good night and thank you for everything, okay, as well. Please thank the whole entire team, cuz I know it's a whole team that works on this as well. You know, and all the volunteers, all right? Thank you, Mary Lee. Bye to the tree commission as well. Mary Lee's like, see you later. All right, okay, uh moving on to, where am I at? Okay. Discussion on teacher appreciation uh week. Um, five, okay, we might have to edit this a little bit, but five hundred dollars for each Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas Stone Elementary School, a total of a thousand dollars. This is very simple, um every year in the, Melissa, you are so wonderful. In the budget, we have teacher appreciation, a line item fifty, five fifty. Totalling a thousand dollars, we go ahead and give five hundred dollars to each of our schools. And um we put on the agenda more to announce it cuz already it's been approved, but we wanna make sure we cross I and dot our Ts. And uh we make the T, the presentation to the schools. They put the money together with like PTO and everything else they do to try to um do something fun and creative. Some things that they done in the past have been either baskets or like, you know, food. Um, trinkets and so on and so on. I mean, the list goes on and on. Valerie, is there anything you could think out of the top of your head that they done for teacher appreciation? Cuz I know you and I are very involved with both schools. I ran down through the list?
I think so.
All right, perfect. So this is more of announcement information and a way of saying the city of Mount Rainier does contribute to teacher appreciation uh fund. In order to make sure that we thank our teachers and appreciate them for the wonderful thing that they do in our community, all right? So there you go. That was less than five minutes. I know Mel is like, three, two, one. All right, thank you, guys. All right, so it's there. We're gonna put it up like, you know, in the next meeting, but that way um the team could cut the check and it's both checks and it's ready to go, okay? And then we'll, we'll take care of it. All right, thank you, Mr. Kamali. All right, perfect. Moving on to the next item. We have presentation discussion, the police review and advisory board report. Uh, the police uh, police review and advisory board will make a presentation to the mayor and council. All right, I see, I see at least one, if not two of the chairs, the co-chairs are both here. So go ahead, the floor is uh yours and.
Thank you for this time. About our meeting with the city manager and the financial director um as required that the police review and advisory board do each year. I'm just gonna give a brief synopsis. Came up, all of our board members were present at this, this meeting that we had with the city manager. As well. So I'll just go through those, those briefly. There's three areas I wanna cover just in general. The annual report, um those mission statement for the PRAP. And then uh ordinance that establishes for So the meeting happened. Couple of issues came up or questions about how funds from uh traffic violations that had previously previously been sequestered in a separate fund were now a part of the, the general. Terms of option to purchase versus leasing uh the, the new cars. I just, I was understanding that it was more affordable.
Tony, you, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I could barely hear you. It's cutting off a lot. It, it might, it might be only one. It's like, but it's cutting off, so I'm hearing every other word. So I will suggest if you could break down the report, I know you said you had three different sections and you jumped to a different one. So I'm not sure if I missed something in, in what you were saying.
I can't hear.
No, it, you cannot hear.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Go ahead and try.
Can it, can you hear me now?
A little bit better, yes.
Okay, so what I was saying is that uh based on the meeting that we had with the city manager and the financial consultant. Questions came up regarding how uh funds for traffic violations had previously been sequestered in a separate fund, but we're now in the general fund and just why that changed. Um, there's a number of traffic violations that have gone to collections. So there's money outstanding that needs to be collected for the city. So just also what's the status of those, those collections and how is that being dealt with? When it came to the purchase of the new cars, our understanding was, I guess, the, the the outlay of cash was a discounted price. We're just wondering in terms of the tax ramifications of paying outright. And the uh sell, uh the depreciation schedule and the, the tax uh benefit versus the leasing and what the tax write, write-off would have been there. Just curious as to was, was the tax ramifications of one way or another in terms of how the cars were acquired, considered before the purchase was made. Of just the budgeting process, the amount of input that Chief Olson had in the process.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off right there because it's definitely not, this is not the meeting for any of that. I think you're asking us questions that this is the first I hear, but I think this is something that you guys have to talk to the city manager because he runs the day-to-day stuff. Right? And he's the one that you guys are supposed to meet with. I thought your report wasn't something completely different. Um, the, the report usually like, you know, the purview of um of the, you know, uh was the police advisory board is to give recommendations to the city manager on various items and also if there is any um any, any ruling that they, the police department has that there might be an issue. Those are like the limitations of the board. So I'm not exactly sure um how any of the other items fit into this meeting. Because it's not, this poor, you're not giving me a report. You're basically asking us questions that you need to, they need to be addressed with the city manager, if any. And you could make recommendations to the city manager and then the city manager like makes recommendations to us with the financial team. But uh we don't know, um, I think that that's where it is right now. What it needs to be. So all those questions you're asking us is not for us to um, it's not for us to discuss here. That doesn't mean that you have to have with the city manager. But again, you can make recommendations. Our recommendations could be like, we would like to recommend X, right? To move forward, right? And then the city manager and his team like analyze that information and then like they presented to on it. But the other thing is like, at this point, we're voting on the budget on the twenty-fourth, so there's um reports of like uh concerns, it's like very late. I know there's various meetings that were canceled prior to that, but um I will say that at least for my understanding of what um the police advisory board.
I can't hear you right now.
Selena, you.
What you're here for. Sorry, like they're calling, but this is not what we're here for. But uh Jared, I know you're the liaison to the committee. Can you give us a little bit more feedback? Is there something we're missing or?
Can I have a comment?
Hold, hold on, let me talk to Jared first in order for us to figure out what to do next, cuz if not, this is getting um thi- this is getting where it's not, where it's not supposed to be. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I mean, as, as the liaison, I, this was, you know, again, the council you know, commissioned the police advisory board to kind of serve three things. One was um you know, provide an annual report, um two was, you know, provide feedback on procedures and so forth. And um, and, and so on. So there was kind of an, it was a kind of a narrow um bounds around it. I think we were, you know, we're looking to kinda we've been looking since the board was formed to, to receive those, you know, I guess a, a presentation. You know, report and presentation out to the um, out to the, you know, mayor and council. And so I, I, I guess you know that, you know, as a liaison, I'm trying, my role is not to direct the committee, right? My role is simply to, like any other liaison here. Tree commission, you know, uh, uh, M U T C, our role is to sort of just be the kind of bridge between council and the committees themselves, but uh, you know, so I, I'm not wanting to kind of step in from a directional perspective, you know, and, and say what you specifically need to do, but you know, I think there's, there's kind of a laid out in the commissioning of the um police advisory board. You know, there's three, three kind of bounded tasks that I think we would look, you know, look to the commission to do. And that's, you know, I know, I know they're, they're narrow where, I mean, I'm just gonna be, you know, there's things folks, a lot of committees want to do. We charter each committee to do a certain thing. Uh, and that's, I think, you know, what we would look for from the advisory board, um, you know, to receive on an annual basis. Timed in such a way that um, you know, it feeds into the budget process. I know the committee was originally planning to kind of bring feedback before the budget season started and, you know, it's if there's some coming right now, it's coming, you know, it's coming a fairly, kind of fairly, at least to me, fairly late in the budget process uh. But um I'll, I'll stop right there. So, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, Luke?
So sorry, I, um, what is that, what is the, the sort of question before us right now? I'm just a little bit unsure on like the.
Okay, the police advisory board is supposed to report to us. Um, the first step is for them to submit recommendations to the city manager. Um, for budgetary items, right? They went through a list of questions they um assuming they're posing for us to answer. But that's a communication, that's a conversation they need to have with the city manager when it comes to uh cars and budgets and the financial team. That we're not um, we're not equipped to answer. Here, the report mainly less focus on if there's any um item that they basically report. They have like, you know, any um, well, Jared went through the various points that to discuss, but yeah, yeah, go on.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I just appreciate police advisory board um coming together and coming in front of us. Um uh, I probably, and this is not for discussion right now, I probably just need some more clarity on um the, the role. And I'm sorry, I haven't been close to the board since we passed the legislation. Um, a lot of times we sort of rely on the liaisons to be sort of close to the board and do that. So I just kinda need to revisit the board and, and um you know, the, just the context for the creation of the police advisory board was, was really coming out of um um, you know, George Floyd and the Black Lives Matter protests and making sure we had accountability um in the police department and civilian oversight of that. It uh, so those are the discussions when we, when we created the law. And so um just wanna make sure we're, we're just want to make sure we're we're doing those things. Um, and um uh, you know, we can always revisit a law, we can always change the purpose of the police accountability board if we want to do different things, that's always something we can consider. Um, but just want to be mindful of that and that um um of those things. Um uh, you know, if we wanna yeah, so it just seems like increased lobbying for funding is just it feels like a different a different thing, but it could, sorry, my light just went out. Um, but it could not be. So that's just research I need to do on my end, on the back end, but I appreciate folks coming to this meeting, prepare to talk stuff and present a stuff. I just don't have much good feedback. Um, and that that's my fault, I need to do some some homework, so, but thank you.
Yeah, so originally the board was was thought to be created through that process. And then the county took over uh what the police advisory boards were and it stripped like the the local police advisory boards of like many, many things, including investigation, including um like police officers having to go in front of the board and so on and so on and so on. There's a police advisory board actually at the county level where people will report all of that. And so the scope of it became very minimal. Remember, like, you know, even in the last few days, we had to gut the whole legislation out in order to like um be able to be in compliance with um with the state law. So we might have to revisit it more or less. Okay, I'm gonna go to Danielle and Valerie.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was um in in preparing for this tonight, I pulled up the actual original ordinance and then the following one. Um, and uh was trying to figure out, you know, what's going on, what to expect, because I didn't have anything in my agenda packet. Um, but to um answer mayor, um it does say that the board and the city manager shall review the department's budget before it's submitted to city council. So um, you know, they were possibly supposed to, you know, review the entire budget before the police department actually submitted it, according to this. I don't know, I'm agreeing with you guys. There's like, I've got two things here. Um, I know it, there's police review boards and police advisory boards. Um, and they have like different duties across America. Um, I I I appreciate all the work that they've put into this and and you know, looking at the budget and um pulling out questions and stuff. Um I do agree that this should be, you know, discussed with the uh city manager and then brought to council, you know, maybe in tandem together. Um, but um, I agree, I think we need to look at the purpose of the police review and advisory board and and hone in on what their actual, you know, jobs are supposed to be, you know, because like you even said, Selena, it's like when I was in Dallas last week, the police review board was meeting there publicly to discuss um some community questions about something and it happened with a police officer and the purpose is to um get that community policing feel so that the residents feel heard and seen instead of just going having complaints about the police, you know, they have these residents that they can go and, you know, talk to and stuff. So there's that community policing um thing there, but um and then uh the advisory to look over the policies and procedures and and to communicate with the chief in um his blind spot in the community to let him know, you know, what things are going on so that the police department is better aware of things so that they can change you know, their policies and procedures on how to address the community. So I think that there is a lot of benefit to be had by the PRAB, but I think that we need to um look, um, I agree with Luke and Jared on this, that we need to um hone in on this a little bit better and 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 define it more to a T on what their actual job is. But Tony, I mean, I would, I would highly recommend that you take, you know, the report that you were giving to us and uh talk to Mr. Kamali with it and then um e- even though we are, you know, at the end of budget, you know, and stuff, but still you know, take your concerns and the things that you found to the city manager to make him aware of it, so that maybe, you know, it can be addressed in another way. But um I really appreciate you guys taking the time and uh and um I look forward to working um on trying to, you know, turn this into a more polished um committee. Thank you.
And I have a comment.
Hold on, Tony, give me one second. I'm going through the council first and then we'll go back to the committee. I'm not trying to be rude, I need to talk, I have direction.
To answer these questions.
Tony, I have to wait until they're Tony, please be respectful. I'm asking them to give me guidance. And then I'll come back to you.
Premise in the question.
I'm sorry. Right now, I need guidance from the council to know what the next steps are before I move on. You know, I could make a lateral decision and say I'm tabling this to next meeting, but I want to hear from council to know what is it that they would like to also do. So that is the process and procedure. So I need to be, please be patient. What they're trying, because you could provide our information, but if it's you know, if if it's not, this is not the right platform, or this is not what this is the intention of the board, it's just not gonna do any good. So I want to make sure I give the floor to uh Councilmember Woodall. Um, and then I'll say a few words. So go ahead, Valerie.
Um, yeah, thank you. I think um, I think it's important um for this committee um to come to council with kind of an overview of what what you've been doing, um, how it works. Um, and then, you know, if you do have financial um conversations with the city manager that you need to work through, I think that's important to go through him first. Um, and make sure that he's on board with whatever um you guys are proposing. I think that's really critical to the committee being um, you know, s- a strong one. Um, but I appreciate um you guys coming before council and making sure that we um do have accountability in our police department, um and that we do have um that arm that can can help citizens uh participate in this. I think I think it's critical, but I think we we should, I agree with Danielle and uh uh Luke and Jared, that we should just review the scope of the police uh review committee and make sure that it makes sense. Um, and so that we're aligning both our um, you know, what we expect, but also what we can fund. So I think with that, um I, you know, I'd love for you guys to come back and and talk a little more in the future about kind of what the what the plans are, what you're doing, what what we're doing uh going forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, so I will say to you guys that this is something that we expect from all the committees. So when it comes to like reports, we usually ask the some the committees to submit it to us ahead of time, ideally, so we can review what it is. When it comes to the budget, the committee stayed with the ma- with with the city manager. Uh, that's who they communicate with when it comes to like their questions, when it comes to their feedback, when it comes to like potential ideas, right? Uh, the city manager and the finance director work on it and then they figure out like if there's something that's doable, i- i- whether or not it could be done financially and so on. Right? Um, or even legally, right? And then, how do you call it, they will they will add it or or not to the budget they present, right? But that's the process for every single one of the committees. So I need to make sure they understand that this is not something we're asking that's different than any other committee. That's basically what um what they do. Uh, when it comes to all the questions you were asking, if you already sit down with the city manager, I think you guys need to maybe schedule another meeting and sit down in order to to do it, because it sounds like there's certain things that you guys need to still address. And he'll be able to answer what he can answer, right? But again, you guys are advising him. Um, and that's the role, you advise him and then how do you call it, you um then he's able to um, you know, figure out what he does with that information. But I think that um in the famous word miles, like, you know, where I think we're putting, how do you call it, um the car in front of the horse, I think we need to revisit what it what the committee does. Because at this point, it sounds like we're out and to address Danielle's point, that's where uh the equivalent of what you saw in Dallas is what the county will do. Right? So the county uh took ownership of um of that when it comes to like if they need to um, and it's run by residents, any resident who apply um is volunteer um was led by residents of the uh Pregeorges County. And they could, how do you call it, volunteer to be able to do um a lot of the process um that you're discussing, like if they have a complaint about officers, they come to the chief of the city manager, right? But if it comes to investigations, it'll be the county who um who takes care of all of that and they have been very um adamant about it. And we want to make sure we also follow the law because we could get ourselves in um in trouble if we are having um discussions outside the scope. So I'm gonna give you the floor, Tony, and I see Sharnelle also has a a comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Maybe it was, I was not posing those questions to you as the council and the mayor to answer. I was really just sharing with you the questions that we posed to the city manager and the financial director. I was giving you a recap of that. And then was gonna give to the recommendations that we do have as a result of that meeting and review of the budget. So I that that this whole characterization of us coming to you for the answers, no. That was, these are issues and comments and and questions that we had with the city manager. It was just a recap of that conversation, not to come to you to say, answer these questions. That was not, that was not my intention at all. So I'm sorry for that misunderstanding. But that that was not the the purpose of sharing it with you in fact.
Okay, thank thank you for that. Uh, I think that although that was addressed, I think that we also counsel then everybody else needs to like revisit the the scope of things to make sure it falls on it so that when you guys give your annual report, it falls under the guidelines that uh we need to give. And I think that even if you don't post the questions to us, it sounds like there's still some work that needs to be done aside from the meeting. And then once you post a recommendation to the city manager, then it's like we could come back to the to to the meeting, because if not, they're just like questions that now are being posed in the air. Right? Um, and maybe we need to define by when in the year this report needs to be given. So that could be something that we could add it or tailor, because I think that most of the reports, Mr. Kamali, budgetary reports questions come in from the committees and departments in December, January, wh- when, around there?
That was uh, the deadline for this year was almost in December, so and uh it is good to know for mayor and council that what uh Tony is talking about, that was the meeting that we had last year and we answered the question regarding why we are transferring the money from the Speed Camera to the, you know, the city's general fund. And the question regarding core financing, this is something that I hear tonight. And I'm surprised that since last year, they never requested any meeting with me. My budget is almost mayor complete by next week. The mayor and council are gonna vote on it. I had to few times email Tony to get the budget for the police advisory board. And she never asked me to review anything. And they never asked for any meeting. So I'm surprised that she's putting me on the spot tonight that she asked me a question regarding purchasing the cars. And these are some new information that I get and mayor and council know that I am available to all the committees. I can make time if I were asked, but unfortunately, this is something that I just get it tonight. But I do appreciate mayor and council to look into the resolution and ordinance again. Because I think there is some misunderstanding the way that we're reading that ordinance. And I do appreciate to, you know, get some some clarity on that. And I am available, Tony, anytime. You guys want to see me, I'll be glad to see you guys. And I appreciate you giving me a heads up. And tonight, you know, and the deadline was almost in December, I can give you exact time. But and date, and uh, you know, it's not on the top of my mind right now. It's what, it's been almost, you know, three months. Thank you, mayor.
Oh, uh, thank you, Mr. Kamali. All right. So I will say that the next steps at least will be for um for us to review it and the guidelines of what it is, and I think to be a little bit more clear. Make sure the police advisory knows uh by when we would like the report in order to be um beneficial in the limitations of like what the board is is said to do, right? When it comes to like advising um advising the city manager when it comes to on it. But it is reviewed, it is also part of it, it's like um to review policy. Um Tony, do you have any policy you guys have reviewed that you guys have recommendations on when it comes to the police work orders? Or do you have reviewed with chief and the city manager or or no? Because I think that's part of the conversation. If you guys have none, it's fine. It doesn't mean that you guys have to have something, but um i- if it is, I think that's part of the conversation that the city manager, the chief also need to have in order for them to once the recommendations are addressed to them, they could um, they could figure out why so that is it was done and made recommendations uh to the council to see if something needs to be um addressed um when it comes to resolutions in behalf of us, or something that could be addressed at the police and administrative level and just like raise awareness that um this has been the change that has been done in the police orders. Okay?
We did have, can I share a couple of recommendations that we do have?
For the, go go ahead.
Okay, so just in terms of this current FY twenty-five budget, um, this is based on conversations with police team, uh, the F O P.
Okay, so uh, you guys cannot be talking to the F O P. The F O P is a union organization and the city is the one that talks to them when we're negotiating and we finish the bargaining negotiations. So that conversation not even us as council member need to be talking to them about renegotiating anything. So that's where we talk, see, this is exactly why we said we need to revisit the scope. Because how do you call it, if not, we're getting away from the scope and you guys are a city committee. So definitely, like, you know, uh, any communication with any any medium communication with the F O P goes through the city official um channel. So I I'll tell you this, like, the council members are are not part of that and neither neither am I. There's like a team that like usually talks to them and we literally just finished negotiations with the F O P. Um, not even a year ago, maybe what, six months ago or something like that, or maybe a year ago. But I will say that you guys cannot, you know, when it comes to the F O P, if they have a concern, they need to come straight to the city manager, because that's their point of reference and usually is from F O P, um, I think it's precedent is the title to uh city manager, they're the ones that have the those discussions. So the police advisory board should not be having discussions with F O P when it comes to what they want and don't want or any of those sort of things. So that is something that is not within the scope of the committee either. It's not even within the scope of ours.
Talked about with them was not the contract process. Uh, different officers sit in on the on the the meeting that we are monthly meeting. And when it comes to budgetary issues.
So a- again, that could be considered in breach of like, you know, contract, because they're supposed to be communicating to the city manager when it comes to anything that's related to to the F O P. Right? So they should not be talking to um to you guys about that. You guys are, you know, there for the residents, right? Not for, not a platform for the F O P. So we need to be very careful with that. So even if they're they're, if they're residents and they attend the meeting, great, right? But I will say that when it comes to them, you know, even them making any remarks such that to you guys is uncalled for. So you guys need to let them know that if they need to propose something or they have a conversation or they have a suggestion, anything that has to do with F O P, they need to direct it to the city manager. That's who um, and the same thing, the same thing, you know, we also do, how do you call it, as as mayor and council. So Jared, have your hand, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna suggest, I think, you know, we, again, as stated before, we had commissioned the police advisory board, state law basically reduced the purview of it pretty significantly. Um, really substantially, honestly, all the pieces that we originally contemplated. And, you know, there's, again, the three kind of task areas. I think what we probably need to do is, we stated in the work session, Selena is is bring this together and 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 define, because I Tony, if I can be frank, I I don't think we've done, we put together this commission, what we didn't do was probably lay out things like
Put at least five more minutes, because it's like it's it's already run out of time and I'm trying to be respectful of like, maybe there are room space as well. Can I have a motion for five more minutes?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion, objection, extension, five more minutes have been added. Sorry, Melissa. We, I just see it in the screen. All right, go ahead, Jared, you were saying something.
Yep, sorry about that. Um, yeah, no, I was just saying, we need to bring this to work session, I think, because what we we put this kind of committee together and then the purview shrunk. Um, and uh, you know, when council member Tarlo left council, what we didn't do was kind of frame, I think, how how and when and the bounds of what we need, what what we're asking you to do in the charter uh and when. So I I think that would probably be probably be beneficial for council to come together in a work session and define this clearly, because it would uh lay out exactly, you know, what council had when we contemplated the committee and commissioned and appointed folks. And then um, you know, so you you know what we're asking you to bring to council as part of that, uh, as part of the task, um, when council, you know, again, solicited and appointed folks onto the committee. So that's just my two cents.
So I will say, Mr. Kamali, can you reach out to Alyssa as well to make sure that if we need to clean up some empty holes in that um resolution is there? I do think that maybe adding um the day when reports do, it will be helpful. Right? But also, how do you call it, um, from what I recall from the document when we pass it, it's like they need like up to four times a year. So um, we need to make sure that is um that we're able to capture that as well. So I think that Jared, I do think it'd be good to bring it back to a work session, but I think our, you know, Alyssa, since you work on the document, be key to like you know, there's certain things that we need for her to um specify for us, right? So we're like a little bit more informed on it. So we're like a little bit more informed on it. But I I would tell you that, yeah, um, where you're at, I mean, they got it that one, that's the reason why we decided to hold on until after it got passed. It was basically like meet up to four times a year, make recommendations to the city manager and um and how do you call it, somewhere along the lines of um of how do you call it, um, if there were any um, were um, and I'm so sorry, chief of police, I'm like butchering what your orders, uh, depending what the orders are. If there was any orders that they need to make recommendations to the chief and the city manager to be adjusted. So there was like, it didn't say you only have to meet four times a year, but it said you could meet up to four times a year. So that was, that was fine. Oh, at least four times a year. Thank you, Jared. Um, okay, so, but um, what we'll do right now is like we'll table this until next meeting, you know? So that way we could um give you guys more clarity because I don't want you guys to waste your time. We do appreciate the time that you guys are meeting and the work that you're doing. You know, I wanna make sure it's not like, you know, something that, I don't want you guys to feel like, you know, but I'm trying to be very careful because it's state law and negotiations took place. So I wanna make sure I'm very respectful to make sure we don't cross the line. And I think that this line, we're in the gray space. And I'd rather us get clarity on what the comedian for you guys to get also clear clarity on what it is and what it isn't. Right? In order for us to like um move forward or to get um, you know, for you guys not to waste your time, you know, that's the reality. You guys are putting quite a bit of time on it, so I wanna make sure that um you were able to um to do this. Okay? So um.
Sure, I'd have her opportunity if she has any comments.
So, Tony, if you will give me a chance, I would have been able to give her speak, but I need to make sure council has any last words before I move it on to uh the public because go, go ahead, Jared. Jared, your mic is muted.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to lower my hands.
Okay, perfect. Danielle, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you you corrected yourself, but the ordinance does say at least four times a year.
Yeah, but you don't have to meet like every week and stuff like that as well. So that was like overall, it was a minimum. Alright, so um, can I have on three more minutes on the clock, please, to give Sharnet an opportunity to speak?
So moved.
Thank you so much. Any discussion, objection, extension, hearing none? Go ahead, Sharnet, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, um, I have taken the opportunity to go over this and to read it. And a lot of what we're doing right now is not, because the the directive, the ordinance has been gutted so much, there really is not much for the board to do. So I would like to to have an opportunity to meet with the city manager and and for us to sit down and go through, you know, through this or a directive. I know that this is something that that the mayor and council does, but I also think that's that members of the board should should have an opportunity to sit down and meet and discuss this with you because it just seems like there's just so much more that we could be doing. And based on what we're doing right now, I see no reason why we can't sit on any other boards in the city because everything that we do now is public information. There's nothing on this board that that is just, you know, so private. We're not discussing anybody's uh investigations or anything like that. So there's really nothing that that prevents us from other than or or give it an opportunity to have this go before the city attorney and have the attorney take a look at it based on what the court current ordinance is and see if there's any reason why we should not be able to sit on any other board. That's one thing. A- and if we also could just take a minute and look at this, the administrative administrative charging committee and a lot of what is outlined in this is something that realistically we could be doing that would really aid the residents of Mount Rainier and gi- give them something to come to. So I'm just asking that this please be taken under consideration and sit down with people that are currently on the board with the city manager, with the city council, and give us an opportunity to discuss this. And secondly, we have made recommendations now to to the chief. Now, maybe we should have been making those recommendations directly to the city manager, which will be done in the future in writing and keeping a record of those uh conversations because I don't know of any police jurisdiction that that does not require an employing agency to take out an insurance policy on officers.
Um, I'm I'm sorry, so if you have a recommendation, I mean, the the speaking rules do advise that if you have a recommendation when it comes to how to run a department, you specifically speak to the city manager and not bring it up to the meeting. That's part of like the, any com- any complaint recommendation as such has to go to the city manager in the meeting that you guys are having. May may I ask for one point of clarification? You showed a paper, but I have no idea what the paper is. What was the paper?
By my camera, can you see that?
It says.
Is the Maryland, Maryland Police Accountability Act of twenty twenty-one.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I think that this is what what mayor and council, I thought this is what you all were doing to base our roles, duties and responsibilities off of on the original ordinance. And again, off of the second ordinance that came out. Because the first ordinance was pretty much in alignment with this document. And then the second one that came out, it, there's remnants of it, but it it it's, it's it's just, it's bifurcated. It it gives no real guidance on what, and I think that that's one of the reasons why it's taken us so long to get to this point. And and it's kind of left, kind of left the people on the board up to their own uh their own thoughts on what we're supposed to be doing. So I am asking that, yes, please, that that we be, all be brought together and that the people currently on the board be allowed to have some kind of input into what the final analysis is gonna be with this. Thank you guys for taking the opportunity to at least listen to what I had to say and I ma- I hopefully it was not just a repeat of everything else, but this this document says, pretty much says it all, and it addresses county, the county and the city of Baltimore, but it does not go into the um duties and responsibilities of a municipality. And the state and the county have basically taken over all the responsibilities of a prep. So for what we're doing, we should, we should not be limited to just being on one board because we don't have any real anything that, we don't have anything that's not open to the public. So, thank you.
I would say thank you so much for the information. I think that you guys are the only advisory board that makes advising a budget for the police department. Everybody else does it just for theirs, so you guys, you know. So that's the difference between your glasses board and every other board. Like, the green team makes recommendations on the green team, right? The, what's it called, the recommend makes recommendation on their budget. The recommend doesn't come sober and says, hey, by the way, um, I need to recommend to like build a whole new, how do you call it, um, department or add like fifty thousand dollars more to the Department of Public Works. That's our recommendation for them, right? And if they did, it'll be gutted, it will never even make it across because that's out of their school as well. So this is something that you guys have to also understand that when you guys sign up, so we made it abundantly clear that you cannot sit in another city committee because you guys made recommendations to the police uh budget. And I'll leave it like that because time has run out and we'll table this. So, Mr. Kamali, you have directions to be able to talk because our city attorney did went through it and it is gutted, but it's gutted because now the county takes over that and we have made every effort that if the county does something, we basically let the county do it because they have the resource ability and they um supersede us in many things. And that's um part of the frustration. That's the reason why we had to contemplate whether do we even have a police advisory board? If the county is doing everything that is being asked of us prior to that to have, right? So that's something that we do need to, you know, that's a conversation that also is gonna be in the table because if the county is on it, you might be more useful for some of the members of the city to try to apply to the county uh police advisory board to be able to do the things that um they um they wanna do that we are limited to to doing and we don't have honestly, we don't also have the resources to be able to do um a lot of these things, including investigations, including X, including Y, right? Um, we don't have that. That's the reality. I think no city has, and that's the reason why it has fallen on the county to take care of all that. Alright, so I'm not gonna continue because I see nearly looking at me like I maxed out my time. Alright, so thank you guys so much and we'll follow up with you guys to um give a bit more guidance, okay? And to uh reconvene. Alright, um, thank you for everything. Okay, now we're moving on to item number eight, presentation discussion and funding of Mount Rainier Pol- uh, oops, sorry. Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department, um, Gotham Mercar will make a presentation and have discussion with mayor and council on funding for Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. So Danielle, this is your item and we also have, uh, I think I saw the the VP of the Mount Rainier Fire Department here. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm I'm, this time I'm doing the talking. Um, he can, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, back on February twentieth, and I, just so you know, I've read through this, I don't think I've crossed any lines, so hopefully just let me get through this, please. Um, back on February twentieth, I brought an agenda item to council to discuss protecting the company number and to get um the back in the city's budget, and that would be company three, Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department. I think I mentioned that night and a couple of other times, um, that I'd like to see them get a budget of fifty thousand dollars, um, on a, on an annual basis. Anyway, I surrendered that agenda that night on the twentieth to the chief and president to make their plea to you on their own so that I would be able to make a comment, which included the aforementioned money and history of the company. To refresh, on that night, the Prince George's County Volunteer Fire Departments were born right here in Mount Rainier. Um, uh, on one night when uh the four existing uh stations drew numbers out of a hat and designated which stations they were gonna be Mount Rainier during three. Um, at that same meeting, the chief and president Heinz, who is here tonight, um, showed a letter that stated that Mount Rainier gets the least amount of money from the county than any other volunteer service in the entire county. They only get two thousand five hundred dollars a year, not two thousand five hundred a month, two thousand five hundred for the entire year. That is not enough to pay their bills and support recruitment and retention. It's just not. The last time Mount Rainier gave the fire department any money was in two thousand seven when they came asking for help to get a piece of their apparatus and they were given it. As a former first responder, I am fully aware of the out of sight, out of mind thing. No one thinks about the fire department until there is a fire, an accident, or here in Mount Rainier, it's time for Santa to make his rounds right before Christmas. I do get it, I get it. As a for- former first responder, it is just a part of who I am to advocate for them for that very same reason. I could sit here and talk about all the things company and sta- or station three needs, but when it comes to the bare bones, they need money so that they can recruit and retain members. This is, this is a countywide, this is even, this is a problem, not just with volunteers. It's even career having a hard time. But they have the money to recruit and retain. Mount Rainier Volunteer does not. My ask is this, we give the volunteer fire department a minimum of ten thousand dollars for the year of twenty twenty-five for that budget here to help stop the bleeding. And then search for and apply for grants, and I'll be more than happy to help do this, that will help them rebuild and 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 to continue. Starting with the next budget season, after that, twenty twenty-six, we would require a budget request at the same time every year other, that other departments submit, like we just talked about, um, and hold them to those requirements out as outlined in our charter. Now, I do not fault at all the current council or even the current city manager because this is not a practice that has been happening for quite a while. That I think since two thousand seven, like I said, was the last time they even asked for money. But that doesn't mean we can't reignite it to help save our volunteer fire department. If we don't do something, guys, we're gonna lose them. And I tried to, I tried to say at the last meeting, and I'm sorry if I get a little bit clumped here because as a former first responder, this is like really personal for me. Um, if we have a career unit that's understaffed or if they're out on a call and we don't have a volunteer unit in-house, the the fastest another unit is gonna be able to get here, and this isn't putting anybody down, it's just travel time. It's gonna be ten minutes minimum. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but the majority of these houses in Mount Rainier are not gonna survive ten minutes very well, waiting for another unit. And um I'll let um President Heinz comment on this, but um it it takes about two to three minutes to get from station fifty-five down to Cave Wood. That's a lot of time. That's a lot of time. Um, we need to save our volunteer, our our volunteers. You know, this, I I can go into all kinds of reasons. I've I've asked you guys.
Wrap it up because you have like, you're definitely running out of time and, you know, introductions are very small. Go on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Like I was saying, um, well, actually, I don't know what I was saying. No, I'm sorry, when you.
I I think that at this point, we're, we we might have to open it up to the rest of council, but I'll say something very clearly. It's um, the last meeting they were here, we asked for them to meet with the city manager, schedule an appointment. That didn't happen. Um, actually, the city manager, I did reach out and we have submitted some days for uh the chief of our department to meet with us so that we could work on a plan to figure out what is it that they need, what could we go after and how we could work collectively as a team. Because this is exactly what we do with every single department, right? This is what we asked for them to do last time and we went ahead and also reached out to them and say, let's sit down and meet and figure out what it is. But I'll go ahead and council speak as well on the subject because I know various customers felt various way because they're all, nobody here is not trying to support the fire department. We also need to um come up with a plan. When we had a customer come ask for like ten thousand dollars, we told them, hold on on it. Please put it for the next budget. Right now, we're under seven days, so, you know, for us to vote on the budget, there's no time. At this point, time has run out for us even to put anything in this budget. I think that everybody, I I think, you know, people for being respectful following the budget process, for people to be respectful to take a step back to make sure the budget gets approved, you know, on the twenty-fourth so we could vote, right? So right now with with less than six days, and that's not even business days, because it's like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, less than five days, right? That's all we have for like, you know, when the budget's gonna come for vote. So I would say that the next steps, as we mentioned, are for the fire department to meet with the city manager so that they could start elaborating a plan for the upcoming fiscal year, right? In order for us to have stopping that conversation. Mr. Kamali already sent days, correct, Mr. Kamali, to the fire chief? And we're waiting to respond to figure out what, you know, if those dates are gonna work or if they propose another day so that way they could sit down and talk and create a plan and move forward with that. So I'm gonna open up to the rest of council, but I wanna make it clear that we're all supportive. We're just finding a way to make sure that we could sustain the support, but also make sure that we are equitable and at the same time make sure that we're doing this, you know, the right way. So, um, like we said, we did told them in that meeting to like, you know, reach out to city managers to schedule a meeting and that didn't happen, so we have reached out. And um, and scheduled a meeting, so I was very surprised to even sit in this agenda because the next step is for the city manager address Danielle.
Oh, I'm sorry, you told me.
I'm gonna be very clear. I am not tolerating this no more. And I giving you a thousand warnings, you're being asked to leave the meeting. So Melissa, please exit uh, Councilmember Danielle Carr from the meeting, because I am done. I giving you endless warnings so she could be out of the meeting. That's it. I'm not doing this no more. I'm done. Alright, again, the next step was instructed quite a few in the weeks that they came to speak. And it was instructed that the city manager, they were supposed to schedule a meeting with the city manager. I will ask the council if that is the next steps that we agree on taking, that we are respectful of our time and the time of our guests. Because instead of focusing on them being in this meeting, they could have been in a meeting with our city manager as the next steps. So if that's what is being asked, please follow and don't be adding items to the agenda. So far, I've been very flexible at basically passing the agenda items through, but if it's breaking an agreement that we have made, I'm gonna have to hold that item and please be understanding that's the reason why I'm holding it back. So be fully aware that that will, that will happen because at this point, it feels like nobody is, you know, not some people are not following the rules that we all set up for each other and and it has to be respectful in that way. So council, I'm gonna pass it on to you and um, go ahead. I'm gonna go, Jared Lou Bellary.
Um, yeah, no, I I think I just, you know, wanna be clear, I think we're all supportive of our fire department. I mean, I have a number of um first responders, folks that are um firefighters in my family as well, my extended family. And I really appreciate the commitment and the um time you're putting in. I think, I wanna know what the, you know, I I think, I I appreciate what council member Carter brought before us. Um, I really, uh, you know, I, and kind of re-elevating uh the fire department uh's visibility. I really, uh, you know, I in kind of re-elevating uh the fire department uh's visibility in our community. I think that's that's really critical and really important. Um, I want to, as you know, as uh the mayor mentioned, I wanna make sure that, you know. When we're bringing a budget request for it, I think we wanna, as as noted, kind of bring it through the process and um, you know, especially in this case, we're creating. The a request, I and I I think it's coming from the fire department, not um. Or council member directly, but you know, knowing what the budget request is, knowing what it's for, the obligation, um. You know, and it it's, you know, it's an ongoing request. Um, so I I think that that is helpful, like, you know, when. This, I think uh council member Carter brought this before us. I'm I'm missing some context, you know, obviously, I know the fire department's important. I know resources are important, knowing, you know, what the request is, what it's for. And then also, there's, you know, I I asked this in the last, in the February meeting, but. There's a lot we can do, I think, to advocate for you on behalf, you know, on behalf of you for resources at the um. You know, at the county, right? There's a lot of work we can do to advocate for resources at the state. There's a lot of work we can do, you know, we've been very successful pulling in federal funds. There's a lot of work we can do to advocate for resources at the federal level too. So I just wanna make sure, you know, the city, as you knows, we're really small. Our. Tax base is very limited, but you know, the county, the state, and federal government have a lot more resources uh than I wanna make sure that we can. You know, help you advocate for those uh resources effectively. I know you've noticed we've been very effective at bringing in. Federal and state and often county resources where appropriate, and if we can kind of help elevate the voice of the um. Fire department, uh, you know, if, from the position we sit in, I think that's something I really, really wanna make sure we do. You know, if we can find ways to provide support to the department in our um. In our, you know, in our budget annually, that's great. Um, but I also wanna make sure we're doing everything we can to get resources for you. Uh, from, you know, uh organizations that have a lot more, uh stakeholders that have a lot more resources uh that. You know, could enhance the work you're doing, the equipment you're getting.
Wrap it up, I'm sorry. I'm trying to make sure I I trying to spare a lot of time. All right, uh Lou Valerie.
Yeah, I I'm just, I'm supportive of the meeting with the with the city manager. I think that one of the things that's always unclear for me. Is is having an understand of the county's role, how much the county supports the fire department, the funding they give on an annual basis. And the relationship between, I think, the consolidation of the volunteer departments under the the one, you know, bunker hill. Fire station, whatever it was supposed to call. I think that happened back in two thousand seven or fourteen or something. Um, and. The way sort of the county wants it to operate in order for them to, I guess, provide funding or whatever it is they provide. Um, because I know Mayor Miles is a lot, had a lot of hesitancy on this subject. Um, you know, I think from her perspective and from Brian's perspective, there were promises made by the county to to fund this and to run this and. Um, you know, the the city of Mount Rainier was kind of promised that it wouldn't have to 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 fund this. And so, you know. That's what was told to me. I'm not saying that's like truth or what should happen, uh but that's what was told to me and Selena at the time, and so um. You know, wanna be really mindful of that. I don't wanna, don't wanna promise things the city can give if the county's supposed to be on the hook for this. Um, and wanna make sure I'm real, we are real clear about um. Uh, the role that the Mount Rainier Volunteer Fire Department is supposed to s- supposed to be in, because it's my understanding that there were three volunteer units. That were supposed to be consolidated into one, um and um and just need to better understand that as to why there's still. Seems like a volunteer committee coming to us that's still one of the three, when there should be one entity. I'm just very confused about all that. So looking forward for that conversation with the city manager to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, and then I'll make a point to follow up on, because I was under the same understanding, Luke, when we weren't, when we have had meetings about this as well, yeah. Go ahead, Valerie.
Yeah, I think um I think um I echo what Jared and Luke have said. I think if. Is, I mean, I guess one question that I have is, you know, and we don't have to answer it right now, but as you think through the funding mechanism here. Um, is the city of Mount Rainier the only um municipality the fire department is asking funds for, um, you know, and what are other? You know, it's like Brentwood, Coolmore Manor, Cottage City. If they're all part of it, then are they also asked, being asked to contribute funds to this project? I think that's something that I'd like some clarity on as well, um, before the city of Mount Rainier commits to funding as well. So that's where I'm at. Um, thank you.
Thank you. And I think that for the record, hasn't been just like the Mount Rainier Fire Department has asked for funding before. I know we've had. Um, another another fire department within the bunker hill unit also asked us for funding, so that also threw us for another loop. Um, because they had asked for funding to run and it's a lot of other internal stuff that I think that when we have the meeting with the city manager and the. Fire department, we could like, you know, uh get a little bit more clear and understanding. Um, something that definitely was discussed uh was that. You know, like if you guys have noticed, like we put close to five, you know, million dollars on grants, because. We're not trying to raise taxes, because even if we wanted to run most of our departments, most of our departments, I think. Every single one of them is run with additional grants in order for us not to raise taxes in order to make it through, and that includes our police department. So I wanna make sure that uh we follow through in um. And when it comes to like figure out like if there's grants down there and how we can help to like uh partner up to submit letters or like, you know, applications and so on and so on. Uh, can I get at least two more minutes? Because I definitely would like, uh, I know uh the vice president Heinz is here. So um, can I get two more minutes, guys?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so um, Mr. Heinz, um, you're here, correct?
Yes, mayor.
Okay, so we are gonna have a follow-up meeting, so I want you um with uh the chief and the city manager, you know, in order to get more clarity and figure out what the. Plan for the fire department is, in order for us to make sure that um, that we could. Um, aim at this collectively, so that we were not like, you know, waiting until last minute, but to figure out what we could do for this upcoming year, okay?
Yes, yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And moving forward, like I will ask for you guys to do the same thing. The other committees will come straight to the city manager when the call out is put out. In order for us to start having those discussions, but with the fire department, what we'll do is like we'll have this conversation. On, so that way, um, we're able to start planning the year ahead and figure out like if there is. So if you know of any grants that you guys could apply and you guys need our help and stuff like that, that could be other sources that we could um start working on trying to, you know. To help you guys support, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you so much. All right, council, thank you so much. Let's move on to the next item. And thank you to our wonderful fire department as well for all the stuff they do, and please do not feel that is out of sight, out of mind. Because we do collaborate through the year, um both PD, fire department, public works. Call they'll communicate and talk and support one another as well. All right, so presentation of minutes, there is not a vote. This is just a presentation from the city clerk. Should present the following minutes to mayor and council. March nineteen, work session. March twenty third, public budget hearing and budget work session. April second, legislative meeting and budget legislative meeting. April nine, budget and public hearing and budget work session. Review them, let them know. And once again, Melissa, thank you so much to you and everybody. If anybody else works on the minutes, but but to you for for leading this effort and making sure we're like on point. And can I have the upcoming events so I could read them before I call the motion to adjourn? Okay, Community Health Fair and Resources is April twenty, at nine AM to three PM in the nature center. Come out, plenty of resources. The recreation community is also putting a team up day and brunch on April tenth from ten thirty to twelve PM. Um, you could meet at city hall, reach out to the recommend. Um, and they'll have brunch right after a JJ taqueria. You also have uh the open studio tourist on May eleven. Mount Rainier Day is on May eighteen, from eleven to five, and it'll be held at Mount Rainier Nature Center. Cross your fingers and hope nothing else, you know, there's plenty of sun and shine and wind. Uh, the pride parade will be June fifteen, ten thirty, in city hall, uh in the annex, uh parking lot. There is gonna be um a parade, so those are so. Um, mainly make sure that the recommend events are also added to the list of events soon announced, so that we're fully informed. All right, council may have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
So moved.
Probably moved. And second, any discussion? Hearing none, um have a wonderful night, everybody, and thank you to our whole entire team. I know you guys are working. Overtime between audits and budget and wrapping everything else that needs to happen, including our wonderful Mount Rainier Day, so um. You know, to our wonderful volunteers, thank you guys so much as well, because you guys um allow us to do the great things that we do in the city collectively. And at least keep us where we need to be. So thank you guys so much and have a great night, okay? Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for bringing it.
All right, thank you and good night.